All right. So, apologize. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of City Council to order. First of all, I wanted to thank Aubrey Chang for prelude music this evening. All right. Thank you. So many talented young people with the music skills. Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us. We are going to have an invocation by Pastor William Wrench of Calvary Baptist Church, followed by the flag salute by our very own Marianne Edwards.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we come before your presence today in all of our hearts is the tragedy that has occurred in our fair state with so many of our citizens who have lost their homes or lost loved ones in their lives in these devastating fires in the north and the south. And, Father, we do pray especially for those that were touched by the tragedy. We pray for those that have lost loved ones and kin folks, and we ask that you'd minister to them and help them through this very difficult time. We pray for those that have lost possessions and property, and we ask that you'd just help them to realize that those things are not nearly as important as life, and we pray, Father, that you'd just take care of them and meet their needs as well. We pray especially too for all of our firefighters and law enforcement personnel and the work that they're doing now. The difficulty of facing so many fires and so many fronts and the winds and the weather. Father, we just ask that you would protect those that are on the front lines of this fight, and we pray that you would keep them in your care and get them through this and help them to accomplish the victory over these fires. We pray for rain. Lord, we need rain in our state. We ask that you would send it. Pray that you'd send cooler weather and help those that are involved in the labors to get through it. And, Lord, on a different note, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in this place and to carry on the business of the city. We pray, Lord, that you would bless the endeavors of all those that are going to make presentations and all those that are going to make their case. We pray, Father, that you give wisdom to those in authority. We thank you for their authority. We thank you that you have given us civil government to maintain order and to give us a means to carry on a civilization that we can enjoy life and liberty in the pursuit of happiness. And so, we pray that all of these will recognize that they are, like myself, ministers that minister for the good of our community, and we pray, Lord, that you'd guide them in their thoughts and their actions, their decisions. We congratulate those that have won elections recently, and we pray that you would help us all to cooperate together for the betterment of our community and our city, our state, and our nation. We ask your blessing on these proceedings now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. On the day after Veterans Day, let's start this new year, if you will, by endeavoring to remember our veterans and all they have done to keep us free. Would you please join me in saying our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see. Can we have the roll call, please?
Camatara? Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Hello.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
I am here. All right. First up, we have presentations by Ms. Damco this evening, talking about Shop Small Saturday. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Christine Damco, Economic Development Manager here at the city of Temecula, and just wanted to give a brief, take a brief moment and talk about Shop Small. So Shop Small is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So Friday is the infamous Black Friday, and so Saturday is Shop Small. It was started back in 2010 by American Express, really to support local business and shopping with your neighbors and your friends. And so, the city of Temecula has been a part of this program for a few years now, and in Temecula, every dollar spent in the city, only two pennies go back to the city to support our high quality of life and all the infrastructure and services that the city provides. So we just wanted to encourage that. And Temeculans have a lot of options. There's over 729 retail establishments here in the city and over 372 food and restaurant establishments just within the city limits. So you definitely have options. And to conclude, I believe we have a short four-minute video. Shout out to Brandy, our social media specialist, and our media services team for putting together this video.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on, do we have any public comments this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request-to-speak form may be filled out and filed with City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request-to-speak form may be filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is then limited to five minutes. Can we have the first speaker, please?
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Harry Garnett.
Good evening. My name is Harry Garnett. I live in the community of Red Hawk. I would like to give Patrick Thomas and his staff a thumbs up for the consideration of contracting All-American Asphalt to do the slurry comment contract in our community. They have done a very professional job. I'm sure you're going to hear from some 10 percenters that are going to have some grapes, but they really have. The employees, the way they did thing, the signage, the way they rerouted traffic around the community is outstanding. Number two, I'd like to give a plus up to people at work for Mr. Sullivan over there, Jerry Garcia and his staff on traffic striping and left-turn pockets and crosswalks in the area that you're going to consider later tonight about a four-way stop. I appreciate you people listening. You're doing a great job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Christine Bonham, to be followed by Sonia Bravo.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Christine Bonham. I'm a resident of Marietta, and I live right on the border of Temecula. I just wanted to address an item that's not on the agenda tonight. I've noticed that a lot of the commercial dispensaries for medical marijuana are now being closed, and I just wanted to make my argument for keeping those open. I believe that I've read about City Council meetings here, Marietta and Riverside. There's a lot of misconceptions out there about the safety of having recreational marijuana available to adults. One is that other states was something that I think Riverside wanted to look at and see how other places are dealing with the recreational marijuana, and I was looking up Colorado, the state of Colorado, which has had legal cannabis for quite a while now. And if you look at Colorado.gov, they talk about all the different areas in their society that have been impacted. There have been no increases in arrests or crime or traffic incidents. There have been a slight increase in ER visits, which have been stabilized from 2014 to 17, and it was actually instituted in 2015, I believe. I also just wanted to address the safety concerns about children. I've noticed that the dispensaries are kept far from schools, and they also have a rigorous process for getting people in safely. You must have an ID. There's a waiting room you enter. You do not have access to any of the things to purchase until you are called back into a room in the back. And I believe that it's a big misconception that marijuana is also a gateway drug, especially for kids. The biggest gateway drug right now is opioids. That's what we should be concerned about, not whether people are getting medication that they need. And lastly, I just wanted to share my story personally. I was not somebody who took drugs growing up. I was a very good student. I was a very good college student. I started suffering from depression and anxiety, and I was given prescription drugs, which did not help. And I was having suicidal thoughts. I was making plans to end my own life. And there are nights through tears when I just, I reached for cannabis that I obtained legally with a medical license, and that, I think, is what saved me from hurting myself or from killing myself. I want everyone to have that opportunity to be able to have a drug that's going to help them when our pharmaceuticals fail us. So that's what I have to say. I have a lot more I could talk about, but I don't want to take up all the time. And I would just ask that you look at keeping open responsible dispensaries for recreational marijuana purchase. Thank you.
Speaker is Sonia Bravo, to be followed by Alex Bravo. Sonia Bravo, to be followed by Alex Bravo.
Alex Bravo is with me. He's my brother.
Yeah, we're together.
If you would, please.
Yeah, we're brother and sister. So, thank you for listening to us. We just kind of wanted to reiterate about the dispensaries. We have our father, who is 86-years-old, and he has Parkinson's disease, and rather than, you know, multiplying the, you know, pharmaceuticals, you know, the cannabis, you know, is helping him. It's really helping him, you know? And there's been a couple dispensaries that have closed. There's like one left here, and it's not for recreational thing. We're not, you know, we're not stoners. We don't, you know, we're not into that. It's more for, you know, our father.
My father, myself, I have mental disorder, and I've just been released from a psychiatric unit for inflicting wounds on myself, inflicting harm upon myself with a knife. And the pharmaceuticals that they give me don't help me. If anything, they make me worse. My brother has a condition, what is it called?
Guillain-Barre syndrome.
Guillain-Barre syndrome. That disables his walking. That's why he's with a walker. And with him using, occasionally, he uses marijuana, and it helps him...
Cannabis.
Oh, cannabis, I'm sorry. It helps him walk better, and it puts me in a better frame where I'm not constantly depressed and constantly in anxiety mode.
So we're just asking to, for you to consider, please, not closing everything down.
Yeah.
Please.
For us, please. We're not recreational marijuana users. Never have.
You know, we're not stoners. I mean, I'm 50, she's 62. We're not, you know, come on.
Yeah, we're not kids.
We're over that, you know? So it's more of just a medical thing.
A medical thing?
At this point.
And I think it would be beneficial to all of us, especially with, you know, our type of conditions, medical conditions, that we still have at least a couple stores available...
Something available, yeah.
Something available, so we don't have to go to Orange County, which is impossible...
Or San Diego, or whatever, you know?
Or San Diego, or wherever, out of county.
Okay. I think we're done. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Any other speakers?
We do not.
All right. Thank you. All right. City Council reports. Mr. Stewart, good evening.
So I spent this afternoon with the Manufacturers Council, and for those of you that don't know, we have about 20,000 manufacturing jobs in Temecula. And unfortunately, there's a lot of people that could be employed who don't know that. So we're actually working with the Manufacturers Council right now to come up with another program like we did with the construction industry. So, in fact, the construction program, so any of you young people out there who are interested in maybe building houses, doing anything to do with the trades, plumbing, electrical, the city actually puts on a beginning steps class. So you can actually go take this class, learn certification, learn how to use tools, electrical tools, saws, and how proper way to swing a hammer. Believe it or not, there is a proper way to swing a hammer. And so, we're now moving forward and looking for manufacturers also to help us put on a class very similar to that, to introduce the young people of Temecula to the idea they can actually work at a job here in Temecula, stay in Temecula, not commute to San Diego, and actually make enough money to have your own apartment, possibly buy a house one day. These are the kind of jobs that are out there. I mean, these aren't, you know, $13-an-hour jobs. These are more than that. So I encourage you guys to keep your eyes peeled either on the website, or if you know my Facebook page, go to it, because I'll be blasting all this stuff out there so you guys can actually take part in these classes. So please, understand there are jobs here in Temecula, and believe it or not, untaken jobs here in Temecula, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Nigar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If staff could go ahead and put up a slide I had prepared. Let's see. On October 27th, the city conducted a citywide cleanup at Chaparral High School, and I had some things I had to get rid of, so I decided to load up the truck and went on down to Chaparral. I was astonished to see the number of people who were participating in that cleanup. And that's, not only was it crowded and long lines, but it's indicated by the success of the cleanup. If you look at the chart, 95 tons of miscellaneous debris, 10 tons of scrap metal, 1 ton of e-waste. Think about that. TVs, iPads, old phones, motor oil 400 gallons, antifreeze 55 gallons, 13 batteries and motorcycle batteries, 10. So I just wanted to say, good job, Mr. City Manager, if you can convey that to your staff who put it on. It was very successful, and the next one's going to be May 11th, 2019. But you know, it may also pay whoever, whichever department is putting these on here, and maybe to have, maybe just a few more, or maybe do them by districts, or something like that. There seems to be a big demand.
Yeah. No, absolutely. I would like to recognize Dale West. He's in the back there, and he deserves the credit and was responsible for the organization of this, so.
Great job, Dale, and also shout out to CRNR.
Yeah.
Okay? Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
And along those same lines, I think it was about three weeks ago that the city and a group of volunteers affected a cleanup of the creek bed with some homeless encampments, and I wanted to share that they managed to clean up this site in one morning, in about a half a day, and they brought in 5,000 pounds of debris. And I can tell you that a year ago, the same type of cleanup brought in 50,000 pounds of debris. So the city's homeless outreach plan is working because our police officers are continuously making the rounds every single day, the two officers and then two additional officers, to make sure that encampments do not get a foothold. So not only does it, you know, it benefits the homeless because it makes us more able to help them, find them a place to stay, and it benefits the city because it keeps things beautiful, it keeps the hazardous waste out of the creek beds and off the ground, and it's costing us a lot less for cleanup. So 5,000 pounds versus a year ago, 50,000 pounds, and I think that's quite a bit of progress. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Nothing from Mr. Com... I wish I had gotten the memo that tonight was flannel night, so I would have worn mine. But just real quick, wanted to address one thing related to cannabis. Some of you might know, I'm sure my colleagues do, that I serve as the chair for the advisory board for the Bureau of Cannabis Control for the state of California. You know, we've certainly had a very robust conversation in our community related to this issue, and the unfortunate situation that we're in right now is that we do not have permitted facilities in the city of Temecula per council direction, and our policy is we have certain types of mobile distribution allowed to provide people access, but as far as storefront, manufacture, testing laboratories, and distribution, those are all activities that are disallowed in the city. That was given to local government to make those decisions per Prop 64, and that's the current temperament of the city of Temecula. The unfortunate thing is, we do understand, and we've heard a lot of the conversation and met and spoke with many of the folks out there who use medical marijuana and the cannabis products, and certainly, we're not here to debate the benefits about that. We understand that, and we've tried to create a policy that's as compassionate with that regard as possible. But with regard to, you know, a lot of the social media posts and information that we've gotten recently related to the closure of cannabis businesses in the city of Temecula, a couple of things on that. One is, every single one of those is operating illegally in the city. Every single one of them knows that they are operating illegally within the city, and every single one of those is also operating completely 100% illegally according to the laws that were passed by, you know, folks under Prop 64 and by the state of California. So it's unfortunate because with the legal dispensaries and distribution of this product come a significant amount of reliance and assurance for public safety, including track-trace programs and those programs that test the material to make sure that they're actually providing the types of concentrations of product, CBD and others, that they're supposed to, along with not containing any harmful products such as pesticides or besides fungicides and others. And so it's unfortunate because every single business in town who has been operating knows they're operating illegally. And, you know, it's disappointing because social media would say otherwise. Our law enforcement have a very difficult job in front of them because, you know, not only are we dealing with the, you know, legal market that's emerging in California, but a tremendous boom in the illicit market that's currently taking advantage of our residents and many others under the guise of illegally operating business. They're not collecting tax, they're not paying revenue, and they're not selling you a safe product potentially. It's very disappointing. So just wanted to sort of highlight that for folks. Happy to chat more if anybody wants to shoot an email and set up a meeting. Always happy to talk. It's a brave new world we're in right now, dealing with these, with these new opportunities and challenges in the state, and we're trying to get through them as efficiently as we know how. All right. That said, let's move on to Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Item number two, approve action minutes of October 23, 2018. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of September 30, 2018. Item number five, adopt a resolution approving a deposit agreement and joint community services or community facilities agreement relating to the financing of municipal services for Cypress Ridge Development TriPoint Homes Incorporated. Item number six, adopt the 2018 Conflict of Interest Code. Item seven, approve the amended salary schedule to include minimum wage adjustments effective January 1, 2019. Item number eight, approve the amended and restated cooperation agreement with the Friends of Temecula Children's Museum for the support of the Temecula Children's Museum and operation of the Children's Museum concessions and subject portion of lot. Item number nine, approve a purchase order for tree grates for the sidewalks, Old Town Boardwalk Enhancement, PW 17-16. Item number 10, accept improvements and file notice of completion for the pavement rehabilitation program citywide, Rancho California Road, Old Town Front Street to Western City Limits, PW 17-26. Item number 11, approve plans and specifications for Community Recreation Center, CRC Pool Renovations, PW 18-02. And finally, item number 12, adopt a resolution to establish an all-way stop control at the intersection of Channel Street and Dorchester Drive/Heath Lane.
Move consent?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please cast your votes. All right, and that motion passes 5-0. We're going to go ahead and recess the council meeting to the Community Services District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight. Do we have any public comment? Thank you. We'll go to the Consent Calendar. Item number 13, approve the action minutes of October 23, 2018. And item 14, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement with Kingdom Causes DBA-CityNet for the Regional Homeless Outreach Initiative.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Let's vote. Motion does pass unanimously. Mr. Hawkins, what have you got for us this evening?
Well, Mr. President, this past weekend was certainly an important reminder of the sacrifices made by our veterans and fallen heroes. Another quick reminder that now through January 18th at the Temecula Valley History Museum is a timely exhibit entitled "The Volunteers: Americans Join World War I," which includes dozens of black and white photographs and three-dimensional artifacts honoring the tens of thousands of American men and women who sprang into action months before the United States Government formally announced its decision to enter the war in support of our friends and allies in Europe. And at the end of the month, we kick off our holiday season with Holiday Magic on Main. That's Friday, November 23rd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Be sure to make your way to Santa's cozy house at Penny Pickles Workshop as we welcome Mr. Claus to Old Town this holiday season. After his magical entrance, you can visit with Santa and then enjoy a free horse and carriage ride through Old Town. And then, on Monday, the 26th, let's rock around the Christmas tree and have a happy holiday at the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Temecula Duck Pond. And that's from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And while we wait for the countdown to light the tree, enjoy a tasty treat, a visit from Santa, and a festive performance by Resonate Vocal Group. So get ready for another safe and magical holiday season here in Temecula. And that, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Adams, we have a general manager's report this evening.
Mr. President, just one item, actually three short ones, but I wanted to congratulate Community Service Commission Chair Zach Schwenk on his city council election last week, so we welcome him to the big chairs over here later in the year, and also to you, Mayor Ron, and Councilmember Edwards, congratulations on your reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. If I do my math right, I think one of us then has to leave. Do we have, do we have any board director reports? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to November 27th.
Move adjournment.
Second. Any objection?
Nope.
We stand adjourned.
All right. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Let's go ahead and just show for the record that all members are present. Do we have any public comment? No. All right. So let's see, we have one item. All matters listed on our Consent Calendar considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. No discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Public Financing Authority request they be removed for separate action. Item number 15 this evening is establish new community facilities district number 19-01 Municipal Services and authorize the levy of special taxes relating to Cypress Ridge Development TriPoint Homes, Inc.
Move approval of item 15?
Second.
Motion in a second. Please cast your votes. All right, there we go. All right, do we have an executive director's report?
Nothing tonight.
Any directors?
Nope.
All right, go ahead and ask for adjournment.
Move adjournment.
Second.
All right, any objection? No. All right. Now, moving on, we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, public hearing. Let's go ahead and read that. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of a project or projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item number 16, approve the universal health systems Temecula Valley Hospital modification to a condition of approval, planning application number PA 18-1258. Mr. Thorson, I believe you're providing us the report this evening? No. You look surprised. All right.
Surprised?
I'll do it, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr., Luke, good evening.
Very short, very short.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff had been prepared to present this item tonight, but early today, we received a letter from the Attorney for the Los Ranchitos HOA. This letter presented comments and questions regarding this application's level of sequel and sequo analysis. While staff believes that all the concerns in this letter have been adequately addressed in the extensive sequo analysis that had already been completed for this project, staff is recommending that this item be continued to the council meeting of November 27, 2018, in order for staff to adequately respond to the comments made by the Los Ranchitos HOA. We also recognize that there may be members of the community here tonight that would like to speak, and the council may want to consider allowing them their chance at public testimony to get into the record. That completes my report.
All right. Thank you, sir. So let's go ahead and open up the public comment here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We have one speaker under this item, Brad Storman.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I have a few concerns. I was original complaint against the hospital being built back in 2011 and filed a lawsuit, and the city council knows how that went. My concerns are with moving forward and changing the adoption of the new tower and expanding that another 10 years. Usually EIRs are only good for 10 years, and you have to redo another EIR. You said you did that in 2016, did a modification. If they go to 2029 and things change in that area, I don't think that's adequate for just preapproving EIR on that. Another thing is that there's some mitigation factors. I know in your comment book out there and the supporting documents, it mentions some of the, all of the mitigation on the property seems to be, have been met by you guys in your review. There is some things that, in my court case, that we settled on that I'm not so sure because I haven't seen a architect's rendering of where the second tower is going to be. There's a comment in here on road improvement off of Deportola, which I don't, just very brief, and it doesn't show exactly what it's gonna, what they're going to do with that, and that affects my property, and I'm very concerned about that. So, you know, those things, and there's three or four other things that we had settled in a court case, so I don't believe those are being addressed in this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any others? No?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other public comments tonight. We'll go ahead and keep the public hearing open until November 27th.
All right, and we will reconvene this item then. Thank you so much.
You'll need a motion to continue too, November the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Item number 17, approve recommendation for community service funding program for fiscal year 2018-19. Ms. Lowery, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ron and City Council. I'm Betsy Lowery. I am Senior Management Analyst for the City of Temecula City Manager's Office. And the annual city's community service funding program grants up to $5,000 for services or programs offered by local nonprofit organizations. Compliance requires that all organizations expend city grant funding to benefit Temecula residents only. Applications are evaluated based on policies and criteria adopted by the city council to support nonprofit organizations that offer community-wide services such as food, clothing, shelter, and medical care. Councilmembers Jeff Calmero and Stu Stewart are the appointed council serving on the Community Service Funding Ad Hoc Subcommittee, and have carefully reviewed each of the applications together with staff that were submitted for fiscal year 1819. Oops, I haven't moved this, sorry about that. And for the 1819 cycle. The application period opened mid-July and closed mid-September. The city received 31 grant applications from nonprofit organizations requesting a total ask of 148,200. Funds budgeted for this grant program total $100,000. After careful consideration, the recommendation by the Subcommittee this evening subsidizes 23 organizations with funding totaling 86,500. Each of these recommendations listed in the staff report are also here on the screen on this slide and on the next. Again, the recommendation made by the Subcommittee is to fund 23 nonprofit programs totaling 86,500. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions, if you have any. Go back? Yeah, sure. The first slide and then the second.
Do we have any questions? None. All right. Go ahead and, do we have any public comments?
We do. We have two public comments.
All right, let's go ahead.
The first speaker is Rachel Mason, to be followed by Kim Garrish.
Good evening.
I just wanted to stand up here and thank you for your consideration of the proposal that we put in for the Foundation for Senior Care. It will be our first opportunity to ask and hopefully receive funding for our agency to support Temecula residents with our senior care advocacy. Just want to say thank you for the consideration. Thanks.
And then the second speaker is Kim Garrish.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, council and staff. I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration for this funding. As you know, and I, well, I hope you all know, that as of Friday, Michelle's Place opened their new cancer resource center. So Temecula is the only city with a cancer resource center in all of Riverside County. That's in part to your support. Thank you, Councilmember Stewart and Edwards, for attending our first event there, and we look forward to many more and for your support. So thank you guys so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, and no others? All right.
Move approval?
Second.
All right.
Did I jump?
No, go right ahead. Ready, cast your votes, please. All right, and that also passes 5 to 0. Congratulations to all those who were funded this year. Wonderful work you do for our community. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number, let's see, 18 here. Peter, I think this is you now, right?
This is me.
All right, I got it right. Introduce ordinance to amend Chapter 3.32 Public Works Contracting Bidding under Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act to increase minimum bidding requirements and implement recent legislation. Good evening, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a relatively straightforward and simple matter. Under current law, the city can bid, for public works projects that are under $40,000, the city can do that by a negotiated agreement or with city forces. The new state law that was passed increases that to 60,000. Additionally, under current law, if the public works project is $175,000 or more, it must be bid by formal bid, and the new state law increases that to $200,000. So what we have done is we've made those changes to the municipal code for Temecula, and then we've also included all of the other provisions that the city has been complying with in that chapter of the municipal code. So if you wish to approve that, the appropriate motion would be to introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, Amending Chapter 3.32 Public Works Contract Bidding under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act to Increase Minimum Bidding Requirements and Implement Changes to Set Act by Chapter 169 of the Statutes of 2018." And if you have any questions, I'll be pleased to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Any questions?
Nope.
All right. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that goes ahead and passes 5 to 0. All right, item number 19. I'm guessing that's why some of you are here this evening. Receive short-term rental community outreach survey results and consider preparation of an ordinance and NEXA study for the administration of short-term rentals at the request of myself and Councilmember Stewart. Good evening, Brandon. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, City Council. Tonight, I'm here to present on the topic of short-term rentals. Staff has received numerous complaints about short-term rentals in the last year, and with that, we received direction to reach out to the community, to get a pulse on the community, and understand what's really going on. In order to do this, we entered in an agreement with Hark Consulting to conduct a survey and do community outreach. Tonight, we're going to present the results of that community survey and outreach, and we're also looking for further direction from the city council. First of all, we want to do a brief recap on what short-term rentals are. Essentially, a short-term rental is the rental of a room, a few rooms, or a house for under 30 days. There are two types of short-term rentals. There's hosted rentals, where someone lives at the home and rents out those rooms or a majority of their home, and then there's unhosted, where nobody's at the home, they rent out the house or several rooms, but no one is actually staying at the home. First of all, short-term rentals have evolved. This is not a new issue. In many tourist areas, such as mountain communities, coastal communities, these are nothing new. They've been dealing with this for a very long time. But in 2008, there was a change as the applications on mobile phones and online started to evolve and be a lot more easy to use. At first, these started as hostage rental solutions, where you could generate additional income in your home, but they morphed into using the entire home, entire houses, for short-term rentals. Multiple platform competitors entered into the market, and really, they took an old concept and made it a lot more accessible and available in more locations than it ever was. To demonstrate that, this graph will show you the short-term rental growth in the city of Temecula. Between 2015 and 2018, this is the stats for just one short-term rental platform, there's 350% change. Now, this data is based on ZIP codes, so there are some areas in Duluth and wine country that are included in these numbers, which are outside the city limits, but we did want to show you that there has been a significant change. The short-term rental listing map here demonstrates all listings within the city limits. The different colors represent the different hosting platforms. This is actually from this month, so we have approximately anywhere between 300 to 500 short-term rental listings at any time. What are these short-term rentals made up of? Well, 62% of these rentals are actually whole-home rentals. 38% are partial home. 90% of these rentals are single-family homes, and 9% is multifamily units. Our existing regulations show that short-term rentals are currently prohibited in most single-family zones. As mentioned earlier, we entered in agreement with Hark. We wanted to conduct surveys and facilitate community meetings, and we reached out to the community through various social media platforms and also our Good Day of the Week YouTube channel. We created a list and a dedicated website for those interested in staying up to date with information, and we use good old flash and flyers. We handed them out at meetings, we put them in public places, and we handed them out to attendees at these community meetings. This is a photo from one of those community meetings. In these meetings, the real purpose is to gather feedback from our community and the short-term rental operators. We also want to educate everyone on the existing regulations, and we held workshops in each of the districts in the community to make sure that we were giving people access to state their thoughts. We did individual polling at each workshop, and we also conducted an online poll. We did want to be transparent in that one of the short-term rental operators did offer a coupon on the online polling, so there could be some skewing to that. To address that concern, we went ahead and split out the results into live polling and online polling. And with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Lear, who's going to present. And with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Lear, who's going to present the results of the survey and community meetings.
Good evening. My name is Casey Lear. I'm the Director of Research for Hark. We're a nonprofit research organization located out in Palm Desert, and we were hired as a consultant to gather community feedback on the topic of short-term rentals. Today, I'll be presenting the results of those findings, and they're very interesting. So we wanted to gather data a couple of different ways. We knew at the outset, we wanted to gather data through the community outreach meetings, so these comments that people were providing, the stories they were sharing, the personal experiences. So we did that. We gathered community feedback, but we also wanted to get more detailed information from people and what their thoughts and perceptions were, so we developed a survey that they could take either at the event or at home by visiting the website. So I'll start by presenting the results of the survey and then move on to the comments, the analysis of the comments from the outreach meetings. So Brandon mentioned a bunch of this about the survey results, but we worked collaboratively with, it was Hark and the City of Temecula planning team, to design the survey, and we did that by doing research on what other communities, what kind of regulations they had been developing in their cities, so then we could then use those questions to get really honed in on what regulations people supported and what regulations they were not interested in. And so now I'll dig into the results of the survey. The demographics revealed that most respondents were educated, they tended to be higher in income, and they tended to be middle-aged, so the mean age was forty-nine to fifty-two, so they were around middle age. The majority of respondents to the survey were residents of the city of Temecula. If you didn't live here, or if you didn't own property here, you weren't allowed to take the survey, so those were shot out. One interesting difference between those who took the live poll and those who did the online survey is that live poll respondents tended to be homeowners, while online survey respondents were non-homeowners. That was the one difference. We then asked about people's experience with short-term rentals, whether they'd ever been to one, or they're aware of them in their community, and the majority of respondents in both polling groups reported that they had stayed in a short-term rental at some point, and that they were aware of short-term rentals in their neighborhood. We also asked those people who do have a short-term rental in their neighborhood. We asked whether they had witnessed problems or issues with those short-term rentals, and about fifty-eight percent said they had. They listed those issues, and the most common ones were noise, too many cars, and trash. We then got really honed in on whether or not people believed that short-term rentals should be allowed or not, and it was kind of divided. So people either believed that they should be completely prohibited, or they believed that they should be permitted, but with regulations. So they're divided on those two. Far fewer people believed that they should be permitted, but without any regulations at all. We then asked whether people believed that permits should be required, and the most common response was that people believed that permits should be required for people who own a short-term rental property. Much more common at the live polling events than on the website online, but permits were supported. We then got really detailed into which specific regulations people believe should be supported and which should not be supported, and the most common responses from people were that they thought that, the most common, yeah, the regulations that people most commonly supported were hosted home sharing, prohibitions on parties and large events, limit on the total number of occupants, quiet hours, parking rules and limitations, and requirements for trash pickups. So these were supported by over eighty percent of people who took the survey. So these were highly-supported regulations that people wanted to see in place. So then for the comments from the outreach meetings, we had a lot of people attend these events and share their experience, what they believed about short-term rentals. So we took the videos from those meetings and we converted those videos into transcripts. We analyzed all those comments by creating categories, and through a method of qualitative analysis, we came through with some main themes that emerged from the data. So there were three main themes that emerged from public comments. There were positive comments, there were negative comments, and then there were proposed solutions that people provided. So for the positive comments, and I'll note that a lot of these comments were made by people who owned short-term rental properties, so it was, I'll just, yeah, I'll just leave it at that, but the most common, these are the most common themes that emerged, were that hosts are responsible, hosting helps me pay my bills and my mortgage. Many people reported that they enjoy using short-term rentals when they travel, and also that short-term rentals creates local jobs. Some of the negative comments was that there's a lack of accountability, and that when there's an issue, there's no one that they can really go to for support. A lot of noise disturbances, to no surprise. Many people reported they had to call the police because of an issue. Safety and parking concerns, and many said that it impacted the quality of life for their neighborhood and the city itself. Some proposed solutions that emerged were stricter regulation and enforcement, fines and punishments should be in place, some said there should be prohibition altogether of short-term rentals, many said the owner should live nearby or on-site itself, some said there should be occupancy rules, so a limit on the number of people, there shouldn't be thirty people in a home renting a property, and lastly, there should be parking rules, so there aren't twenty cars spilling out into the streets. So my conclusion is fairly brief, intentionally imprecise, so together, the results of the survey and the comments reveal that there are many benefits and disadvantages to short-term rentals, but many residents emphasize that there should be accountability and regulations to make the city a better place.
Thank you, Dr. Lear. So next, we're going to move on to the council subcommittee. The council subcommittee met on October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to look at the initial results, and we presented these results to this council subcommittee. From that came some recommendations. Those recommendations included updating regulations to address the community's concerns, a penalty system, consider a primary residence requirement. And finally, the subcommittee recommended that staff proceed with phase two, which is policy development, and prepare nexus study for enforcement costs. Staff is requesting that the city council consider the subcommittee's recommendations tonight for policy development and a nexus study, and we're looking for future direction from the council. That concludes your presentation. We're available to answer any questions here. Are consultants available to answer any questions? And let us know.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and start with questions. Mr. Stewart?
Well, it's not so much questions as observations. So I was part of the subcommittee that was looking into this issue, and one of the things that we did come to a realization, and it was really almost afterthought, was that when an investor comes in to buy a home to Airbnb, short-term rental, whatever you want to call it, that's one less house that's available for someone who wants to live and work here in Temecula. And it's an unintended consequence, but nonetheless, it's a reality, that we want people who are going to live in these houses, who work here, live here, become good neighbors here, invest their time and their kids, and, you know, so this was a problem that I came away with, was that I'm not so heartburned about someone who wants to rent a room, you know, for the weekend, or two rooms, or three rooms, but to leave a house empty strictly for hotel purposes, for lack of a better term, that's really all it is. It's a hotel in a residential community. And that's where I kind of started having a real, real bad rub on this whole situation. As far as hosted Airbnbs, bed and breakfasts have been around for decades, so, I mean, probably thousands of years, actually. So I don't really have an issue when it comes to something like that, but when an investor or a group of investors can come up and buy multiple houses up here, strictly taken off the market to use as short-term hotels, that's where I have a little bit of an issue, so.
Mr. Terrell.
I have a question for Dr. Weir, if you would come back up, please. In discussing the survey and the demographics of those responding, you mentioned that most, if not all, I don't recall exactly, you said, of those responding in the live polling were homeowners, and the opposite, in far greater number, it seemed, of those online were not. That seems odd, given the fact that so many of our residences are owned. It almost makes it seem like it was skewed, not by you.
Sure.
How would you respond to that?
So people who attended the community outreach meetings are probably homeowners. They're interested in the community. They want to make sure that their community is safe, but the online survey was a link made available to anyone, and as Brandon mentioned, there was, we became aware that some people were, some Airbnb owners were offering a twenty-dollar discount if you took the survey. So I could have sent this to my grandma in Louisiana, and she could have taken the survey and just said she lived here and filled out the survey, so there's really no control over who took the survey online, so we have to just take it with a grain of salt.
I get it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Edwards?
I do have one question. So, doctor, I have another question for you. Did you find that complaints, I don't know if you asked this or not, but in talking to people, that complaints came more from Airbnbs, where it was an absentee landlord? And I don't know that there's such a problem where we have homeowners living in the home while they're renting one, two, or three rooms.
I don't distinctly remember anyone who complaining about hosted rentals. It was typically that they, there were, like you said, that it was an unhosted rental, and they couldn't find anyone. The homeowner just vanished, and they couldn't get a hold of anyone. Yeah, exactly.
So there was no accountability at all?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any others? All right. I'm imagining we have a few speakers on the item.
Mr. Mayor, we have thirteen comments. First speaker is Rocky Madden, to be followed by, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. First speaker is Tammy Alvarado, to be followed by Mike Mason.
I attended all the city forums over the summer. Today, I'd like to speak on a few different subjects beyond what we spoke about there. Mr. Stewart, you mentioned for people to work and live here, and that Airbnbs have been around the city, but they also require a sixty-thousand-square-foot lot. Most of our homes, like in my development, are several feet from each other, so we don't have that buffer that a Airbnb would have. I like to say that STRs take affordable and fair housing off the market at the same time they increase rent for long-term residents. A home in my neighborhood rents for about twenty-six hundred dollars per month. That's according to Zillow. And if I go on Airbnb and I look up one of the STRs that are in our neighborhood with the same home on a similar lot, and I put in, I want to rent it for a month for five people, it comes to almost ten thousand dollars, and that's with a fifteen percent discount. That is unattainable for people that want to work and live here. We want to live by our work and our school, our church, our families, our friends, our communities are here. They have a secondary effect, a negative effect, where the schools get money, they get about eighty-eight point six percent for their students that attend on a daily basis. Without homes for families to live in, students can't live there to go to school. The school doesn't get the funding. I spoke with the school district today, and San Diego's School Unified Board has said that STRs threaten the stability and sense of community necessary for neighbors to be able to support their local public schools. This is an issue that has not been addressed in any of the forums. A lot of things that were brought up were HOAs. A lot of our developments are HOAs, and they're putting amendments to ban the STRs. That leaves the clustering to the neighborhoods as mine that doesn't have HOAs, if they were permitted. And I feel that it's unnecessary to put hotels in residential neighborhoods when we have multiple hotels. I got this number off the website. Their occupancy rate is about sixty-six percent between 2017 and 2020, including Pechanga's expansion. There's nine new lodgings that will go start for development. And lastly, people have strong preferences that support their residential decisions. In good faith, everyone chooses to live in a neighborhood that operates under constraints from things such as ordinances, CCNRs, and HOAs, that work within a framework and zoning that provide a foundation for stability and trust. STRs impede these constraints, denying people of what they bought into, causing hardship and stress. People renting STRs are here for short periods of time and are not vested in our communities. Please don't commercialize our neighborhoods and keep homes for families. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Mason, to be followed by Dora Sleuth.
Mr. Mason, good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I want to thank you for your time and your commitment to the city Temecula. I know a lot of what you do goes unseen, but I've been a longtime resident here of the valley. I've seen what you guys are capable of. I'm simply put, I will be brief, here basically in favor of short-term rentals. I'm also in favor of your subcommittee report, which I just learned of. Being a homeowner, longtime homeowner here, I see this as a way to supplement my income as I ease into retirement. Being a real estate broker, you never really retire, but I see this enabling me to stay in my home along with my social security benefits. So that I'm in favor of. When it comes to the non-host, take a hard look at that. I know when it comes to property management, if properly managed and police, it may, you know, it could very well be a reality, too. And with that, I thank you for your time.
The next speaker following Dora Sleuth is Aurelia Abrego.
My name is Dora Sleuth, and I agree with Stu that we shouldn't have hotels in our residential neighborhoods. And we, going to those community meetings, we heard a lot from the owners and making promises that our rentals aren't the party houses, and they're not. But when you had all these people complaining and that they are living next to these houses, where you have to wait till ten o'clock to call the police, and then you have to wait until they get there at twelve, meanwhile, it's, the rentals are twenty-four-seven. The people that are renting them are there on vacation to party and have a good time, but we're not, we're living in our houses, those are our sanctuaries, where we come home after a long commute, and if we have to get up at five, we don't want to wait up till midnight until the police come. So I really don't think that any of these, we call them party houses, should be in residential neighborhoods. The other thing I wanted to say is, Mike, I remember when you, before you were elected, you came to our neighborhood and went door-to-door to meet us, the neighbors, the working people of Temecula, raising families, and were like, hey, we really like that guy, you know? We voted you in. And then, Stu, my son's been getting a Stu do since nineteen ninety-two. And if he still lives here, or if he comes home, and, you know, my husband goes to your place, anyway, but we voted for you because we knew you and all the different things, and so I'm calling on the, you council members, to protect the citizens that call Temecula home, that have put our blood and sweat into our homes, to make them our homes, and not have to be on edge wondering who's going to be in the house this weekend, who's going to be there Monday or Tuesday, who's going to be doing what, you know? So that's really, I'm just imploring you to look at us homeowners that live here and call Temecula home, and have put kids K through twelve through the schools here. Thank you.
Is Aurelia Abrego, to be followed by Jeremy Ogil.
I think Airbnb is amazing because my mom got to spend more
I think Airbnb is amazing because my mom got to spend more time with me from quitting her full-time job, and she got to take me to school and spend a lot more time with me. And I also like it because because I get to spend a lot more time, and I have a better relationship with my mom than I did with anything else. My mom is renting, doing a lot of houses, so we get to make a lot of money, so we get to travel more. And the more we get to travel, the more we get to have fun. We have traveled to a lot of places, like London, Hawaii, and a lot of other fun places, and I really like it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeremy Ogle, to be followed by Jessica Abrego.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I am Jeremy Ogle, speaking here on behalf of my client, HomeAway. We're here tonight to ask you to adopt regulations or give direction to your staff to develop regulations that allow short-term rentals in Temecula, and also to start collecting tourism occupancy tax from the visitors to those short-term rentals. I grew up in this area from the time that I was born till the time that I graduated high school. So, I understand the community, and I've, it's actually been amazing to see how Temecula has flourished as a tourist destination. People want to come here. And you're seeing that in the growth of short-term rentals. You have a number of beautiful hotels and resorts in town, and I think they're doing very well in this economy. That's why they're expanding. But at the same time, the market's telling us that visitors want other options and additional options. So, I think it's in the city's best interest to find a way to accommodate that demand, and then to tax those visitors and use the revenue to improve quality of life for everyone who lives here in the city. At the same time, you don't want that to come at the expense of a good night's sleep for the long-term residents. And that's why we think it's important to have a robust set of regulations. Prohibition doesn't work. You need to have a robust set of regulations that really gives homeowners who are operating short-term rentals the incentives that they need to be good neighbors. That means having code enforcement officers who are available to respond to a noise complaint if it comes at 2:00 a.m. on a Saturday night. It means having heavy fines for people who create nuisances. It means suspending or revoking permits for repeat offenders. We support all of that, and we've seen it work well in other cities. The one thing we are concerned about in the staff report is the idea of limiting short-term rentals to primary residents only. There's a few issues with that. First of all, it's difficult to legally define primary resident in a way that passes muster with the equal protection provisions of our constitution. But more fundamentally, there's not a strong link between the status of a homeowner and how well they manage their short-term rental. In fact, some of the most well-managed vacation rentals that I've seen have been people who don't live in the home. I can point you to a city like Palm Springs, where most of the vacation rental, and they have nearly 2,000 in that city. Most of the vacation rentals there are open, are owned by non-residents. Something like four out of five of them, though, have never been the subject of a single complaint call, let alone an actual verified citation. And they do have a very robust system of a hotline and a staff of a $2 million enforcement department in Palm Springs. And that's because the homeowners and the property managers there have very strong incentives to do everything they can to ensure that no one's causing a nuisance. They screen their guests very carefully. They meet their guests when they check in, look them in the eye, and make sure they understand that the rules and that they're in a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. And they install noise monitors, and they don't hesitate to kick people out at the first sign of trouble. So, I would challenge the idea that this primary residence requirement is the best way to get to that point. I think we've seen in city after city that the number-one way to get people to do that is to give them the incentives to do so. And again, that means harsh penalties violation, for violations, along with robust, rapid-response enforcement measures. So, I know you're not adopting ordinance tonight, but again, we encourage you to move forward with those regulations and reconsider the primary residence requirement. And if there's anything that I can do or HomeAway can do to help you as you work to develop this ordinance, I'd be happy to sit down and work through that with you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jessica Abrego, to be followed by Rocky Madden.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and the council. I'm Jessica Abrego. First of all, I want to apologize. I was the one who did the $20 discount, and I can honestly tell you that I didn't give anybody any money. Nobody took me up on the offer. I didn't know it was something that I couldn't do. I thought I was trying to get more momentum to get people to take the test. So, I do want to apologize to everybody. That was me. And I take ownership, and I apologize. I am in the Air Force. I'm a National Guard, and I'm a single mom. I own two homes because of the Airbnb short-term rental ability. And I did quit my full-time job, and I do take my kids to school. I have the ability of doing that because of this. We don't get to travel as much now because of managing homes. I need to be here in town. So, you know, as the business grows, hopefully, I can hire more people on. That's the beauty. I hire single moms from my church that I go to. I hire them to do my cleanings. Their husbands or other guys from church to go do the maintenance at the, where at the house. So, we're trying to make it a community thing to make sure that we take care of everybody. In addition, I just actually sold my home. I bought a bigger home because of it. And I'm living the American dream. That's what this is. I am able to live the American dream because of this. Also, another thing, we had, you know, we have people from all around the world that come and stay at our homes. They get to enjoy this beautiful Temecula. They get to see the wineries, go down to Old Town. But we also help people who live here in town. We have families who have water main breaks, who have issues with the home, and they can't stay in their home. And we take them. And we could, they can stay in the town where they live because we have that option, that they can stay in the home, take their kids to school, and just stay there for the two weeks while their home's being repaired because their home's not good. Just the other week, we had a guy with three dogs come in and stay at our home. And he wouldn't have been able to do that anywhere else. But the joys of Airbnb in today's society, we offer that. And he was able to come with his family and still maintain a sense of normalcy. We also have this, we hear everyone's complaints about the noise, the parking. We have installed NoiseAware. It's something you plug into your walls. You can hear the noise ordinances, and you get a text message on your phone after a certain time. And it has definitely stopped the noise issues. You know, first I thought we didn't have it, and then we installed them and realized, oh, yes. We're not, we're not oblivious to this. This is our, this is an issue as well. And because of it, we, now, I can for sure tell you, we don't, because I have a chart that shows every one of my homes, and it's been, it's been wonderful. So, I do hope you continue to do regulations. I think it's very, very important that we have policies in place to make sure we don't have 50 people going into our home or 30 cars parked outside, because I live, well, I just moved to Marietta, but I lived in Temecula before, and I live here, and I love this town. So, I want to make sure that my neighbors and all the homes that I manage, that they still feel like they have a home next to them that cares. So, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Rocky Madden, to be followed by Erica Garbey.
Mayor, good evening, council members. I'm also in support for the short-term rentals to continue in Temecula. Definitely not opposed to regulation. I think it would def, provide a great framework for us to be able to continue to professionally manage these rentals. I currently manage two rentals. I've been a 15-year resident of Temecula. So, I want to reiterate what Jessica said, that I don't, we don't want problems. And we, and Jessica's even started a short-term rental alliance on her own to get ahead of it and implement noise issues, trash issues, parking issues. And we already are taking action on that, whether the council adopts regulation or not, which we are in favor of, and to be proactive. And then, the other thing is, as well, Airbnb is just not for parties and for out-of-town guests. In our homes that we manage, we've had several local residents who've used our homes for hosting Thanksgiving dinners, Christmas dinners, because they live in an apartment, and they're having a larger family come into town and don't have that ability to be able to host it in their homes. And then, as well as, as Jessica said, we provide homes for people who have lost their homes due to fire, flood, et cetera. We had one resident who actually stayed with us for five months, and she had kids who were going to the local schools. She was able to do that. She was able to live, continue to live locally and within a few miles of her residence, and was very appreciative of that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Erica Garbey, to be followed by Aldo Diaz.
Good evening. I am a Temecula resident. I'm one of those that live next door to a short-term rental. My family, like others, have dealt with daily issues of the short-term rentals for more than 18 months now. So, this is really hitting home. I have small children that have also been impacted. I appreciate the efforts in regulating and understand that the possibility of prohibiting or banning STRs may not be feasible because of where we live in today's world. But I want to make sure to ask that you consider strict ordinance and regulations to ensure that the quality, the quality of life that Temecula offers is maintained and that families like ours continue to want to come and have the opportunity to be a part of our community. I ask for the following to be considered. Zoning, making sure that, you know, these STRs are in the right zones. There, where we live, I have a pool and a jacuzzi right next to my bedroom, and it's a constant battle with that. And so, having them in the residential areas, I just don't think is a good idea. Primary residence for owner-hosted properties, I think, is great. The accountability is there when the owner is actually living in the property. I think that, you know, renting a room or even a couple of rooms, I think that with the owner there is going to be a lot better. Management companies, we had the experience of being approached by a management company that was supposed to be managing the next-door property, and it just didn't happen. So, I don't believe that the management companies should be allowed to do this. There's also a certain capacity for these rentals. You know, it shouldn't be more than two people per bedroom. You look on these websites, and the pictures, pictures are showing double bunks and up to, you know, 20, 25 people to the property. I also think it's important to limit to maybe 60 nights per calendar year and making sure that there's, it's not a party venue, weddings or bachelorettes, bachelor parties. I also have small children, and so, my concern is who's coming in and out of those homes? Is there a valid background check of any sort? My kids, you know, I don't even let them go outside anymore because I don't know who's next door. And so, that's a big concern of mine. I know that the county offers or offered a complaint hotline for reporting. As a resident, I can call the police department and maybe code enforcement, but it's not an immediate, you know, response. And so, a hotline, I think, would be very helpful. I also think that there should not be any RVs available for STRs. And scheduled or unscheduled inspections should be something that we should consider. Only one permit per property owner in a length of one year. And then, also, making maybe the possibility of a good neighbor guideline course to be developed. So, if they are going to be permitted, that the owner is able to or required to take this course or guideline of what is expected. I also think that there should be a three-strike-out. If there's certain violations, there should be accountability for that. And I do believe that it is, as residents, we should have the right to have a say in who's going to be coming into our neighborhood. So, maybe some type of 55% of those surrounding the property should be, you know, have a vote in whether they come in or not. The distance between them is really important, and I really would like to see just the STRs be followed, follow all city and HOA regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. You said that we should consider zoning and not allow short-term rentals in residential zones. Where would they go? I mean, the very nature of a short-term rental is that people are renting out their home. Their homes are obviously in residential neighborhoods. So, what did you have in mind with that comment?
I think that what we're saying is that even if they're in residential areas, there, there needs to be some type of distance. I know that in what we've looked at, there's three or four in one street. And so, that's going to really change just the dynamics of the neighborhood itself. I understand that people want a vacation in Temecula. There's wine country. There's other places. If they are going to be in our residential areas, then they need to be specific guidelines to how many per, per the neighborhood, because it's just...
Okay, no, I think that, that answers. So, you're not really talking about zoning, talking about the density of, within a zone. Okay.
Well, I'm sure there's hotel zones as well, you know?
Yeah, but those wouldn't, well, we don't need to get into it. But no, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
The next speaker is Aldo Diaz, to be followed by Yoko Isaac.
Good evening. My name is Aldo Diaz, and I'm the person that lives where three short rentals are on that street. I came to Temecula two years ago. I have a six-year-old and a four-month-old baby. And when we got here, next door, there was this family with three, three girls. They were renting the house. And one was 12, the other one was eight, and I believe the other one was five. They're starting to get in a relationship with my son, you know, getting to know each other and all that stuff. So, unluckily, the owner decided to sell the house, and a short rental company bought it. So, my son is not going to have any relationship with whoever is coming, right? So, that is, by the fact, I mean, the relationship with that is just terminated. The other issue is that we, within, within those three houses, you know, usually, you want to bring your family over the weekend, right? You know, have a barbecue or some sort of party and all that stuff. So, guess what? There's no parking for them. I own four cars. I never park my cars on the, on the streets because I know, and on top of that, it's a cul-de-sac. So, I have to park them there, and when you see all this car coming, you know, over the weekend, I mean, there's no parking. I mean, there's literally no parking. Like I said, there's cul-de-sac. Another issue with that, it'll be the, I'm an architect, so I design, and I like to invest in my property. Now, given the fact that it is a short-term rental, so I don't know how lucky, lucky will I be when I sell my house, the return of that? You know, so I have stopped investing in my own house because of the fear of, you know, they finding out that, that short-term rentals, you know, are very close by. So, I hope that, you know, it gets, it gets regulated and well-enforced. Thank you. Any questions?
The following speaker will be Justin Sterling, after the speaker.
Hello, board members. My name is Yoko Isaac, and I live next door to an STR that impacts my street with noise, parking, nuisance, partying, strangers practically every single day of the week. I've tried cops, city, and even county, but nothing has worked. We need a resolution. After doing much research on other cities that have already gone through this, I've read some key regulations I have found significant. Los Angeles, 14% transient occupancy tax for 30 nights stay or less. Obtain a business registration certificate limits number of days a host can rent out their home to 120 days a year. Santa Monica, 14% occupancy tax payable to the city. Owner must stay on property. Owner must stay on property. Santa Barbara, city enforces transient occupancy tax and must obtain a business license to operate. San Francisco, STR-only primary residence, ninety days per year. If they are not present in home, strict fines. Hosts are required to register and obtain a permit. Business license, liability insurance with at least five hundred thousand in coverage. Pay two hundred and fifty dollars short-term rental registration fee every two years. San Diego, STR primary residency occupancy and ban second home occupancy. Ten point five percent transient occupancy tax. Homes with four or more bedrooms must obtain a neighborhood use permit of nine hundred and fifty dollars. Comply with a Good Neighbor policies to manage any problems. A complaint hotline. First complaint, a warning. Second complaint, citation. Third complaint, license revoked. Collect and maintain detailed records on STRs. Provide notice to each renter prior to their listing. I propose similar restrictions like San Diego to include a limit to the number of occupants. This will help reduce the number of cars parked on the street and noise level. Many other cities in California have already done their due diligence, and it's time Temecula turn, it's time Temecula turn to do right by its residents, especially keeping our children safe. Homes are not hotels. Thank you.
The next speaker is Justin Sterling, to be followed by Robert Schneider.
Good evening, Your Honor, fellow city council members. I appreciate you giving us all this opportunity to come and voice our opinions and our feelings about the experiences that we've had. I, for one, live next to a single-family dwelling home which is owned by a non-resident individual. The individual rents that home out on a case-by-case basis presumably, and I've never met the individual who's the true owner, but I have had experience with his guests. The houses are close enough together that it's possible to throw alcoholic beverages across the barrier onto the other property. That happened to me last night as a result of some Bacchic revelers who were having a little bit too much of a good time, shall we say. I've had to have the sheriffs come out to respond to incidents as early in the morning as 2:30, where sometimes parties can begin at then, or midnight, or one o'clock. You don't know if you're going to bed, and it looks like the doors are shut and it's dark in the other house, and then suddenly, as you're putting your head on your pillow, you hear the doors slam, just laughter and shouting and just that kind of chaos and revelry comes out, and they hang out in the backyard as if it was their own little world, like their private abiza. They just want to treat our neighborhoods as though they are only for their purposes. They're engaging in that kind of conduct that I think is just so problematic and difficult. And it's human nature for us to want to do things as far as we can with as little rules against ourselves. We want to experience things to their fullest, and I think that that's part of the problem with the rentals through Airbnb or VRBO or whatever the company is. The issue is the people who are renting the property want money, and the people who are trying to gain access to the property want parties, and neither of them want to be restricted in terms of the excess that they can possibly have. And I know that previously, the city council had provided an ordinance that bans that in single-family dwellings, and I would ask you to simply enforce that ban in single-family dwelling suburban communities. I don't believe that there's a place for that kind of conduct in those communities. It's wonderful that people can afford multiple houses these days, but I would suggest to this council that perhaps those individuals could rent them to other families who could use them and dwell in them and grow and be part of the community instead of allowing them to people who are on vacations. And I would just ask that this council consider the residents of these communities like myself and others who are experiencing so much trouble, so much difficulty, so much consternation that we can't tell when we're going to be able to invite other people to our home because they're, the guests of the other house are already out there partying. I'm ashamed to invite people into my home. I feel concerned for my own safety as a result of the actions of these other people. I don't think there's a place for it in these communities, and I would ask that as the council considers their various options, that if they are going to permit it, in fairness, whatever ordinance that they end up providing, that you would consider that if you're going to allow it alongside that, consider the possibility that there might be a allowance for those of us who want to sell our properties and move elsewhere where there is no, where there is a full prohibition, that what if it said, no disclosure to a buyer is necessary when the neighbor is a VRBO or Airbnb individual? What if it said that if there was a lawsuit by the buyer against the seller where the seller did not disclose, that no lawsuit could lie as a result of that failure to disclose? If you feel pricked in your conscience at the thought of being able to get away with not disclosing it, if you feel on behalf of the buyer, who now has to deal with this undisclosed issue of Airbnb party house next to them, that you'd consider that it's also not fair to the people who didn't have the choice, who moved into Temecula not knowing that this kind of thing could be a possibility, who have no protection against it, consider that it's unfair to allow that kind of behavior in our single-family dwelling communities. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, council.
Speaker is Robert Schneider, to be followed by Jim Dietrich.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. We bought a home in 2001 in Temecula. We moved to San Diego four years later, but kept the house in Temecula and rented it for nine years. We moved back, and we had to make the decision, did we want to stay in San Diego or did we want to come to Temecula? Well, I'm here. But I trust you that if I knew what I know today, I would be in San Diego. I have to read something to you, and excuse me, I didn't bring my glasses. "No one shall admit any sound having such intensity or carrying power as to unreasonably interfere with the peace and quiet of other persons, or as to unreasonably annoy, disturb, impair, or endanger the comfort, health, or safety of other persons. The city has also restricts noise levels between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM." This is your own ordinance. This is your own, this is your, this is the law. And one night summed it up for me. My, the Airbnb, they got their house next door in October of 2017, and all of a sudden, after a few parties, I said, you know what? I have to text this guy to have proof of what's going on. So I have eight months of texts to show how bad it was. And one night, the last night, was the final. It was a party, and they don't understand, people, a lot of people don't understand, when you have a pool and jacuzzi in your backyard at ten o'clock at night, it reverberates. The noise is just, I mean, I can hear every word. I have my bedroom right above their pool. So that was my problem. So I only asked for one thing, shut it down at 10:00 PM and bring it inside. I'm not even asking you not to have your party, but bring it inside. It was this night, must have been eleven o'clock at night. I tried to reach the owner, and he would not respond. So I called the police, and the police went down, and after an hour and a half, the noise got worse. And so I called the police back, and I said, did you go out there? And they said, yes, we did. And I said, well, and, well, they're renters. What do you want us to do? So pretty much, dealing with the Airbnb that does not respond to you with complaints, the police, God bless them, I got one right across the street. It's not, it didn't work. So basically, I went to next door and confronted these people. A girl came to the door, and again, I'm trying to sum this up of my life with this thing. And so I said, you know, the police came out here, why didn't you abide by it? And her answer was, well, we're only here for last night. People don't understand. It's every weekend, every night, fifty-two weeks a year, different people. It's a big, it's a huge difference. So I decided I had to take my matters in my own hands. So I started a lawsuit, and basically, it worked. Because when he received the notification about the impending lawsuit, that he was going to get shut down if the noise continued. And again, remember, I only wanted one thing. Forget about the parking, forget about the people that are there. It was just one thing. So really, it just came down to, after he got the letter, it stopped. And this was in August. And every weekend, there has been no issues. So I'm back to, I lived in, I don't have an HOA, which is ninety percent of the problem. The San Diego home had an HOA, and they wouldn't have allowed it. It wouldn't have happened. So basically, I believe in the regulations. You got to set up like a hotel. You know, hotels have rules. You know, basically, you can't go in jacuzzi and pool after ten o'clock at night. Well, there's a reason for that. You can't have a party next door. There's a reason for that. And we live in neighborhoods, in residences. Why shouldn't it be more stricter with the regulations? So I'm back to the host, I thought that's a great idea, being on the property. This host was not. Well, you know what? He sold his home, just recently. I mean, it's just the regulations and the host is really what I'd like to see. Thank you very much.
Speaker is Jim Dietrich, to be followed by Kimberly Palmer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I thank you for allowing me to speak in opposition to the short-term rentals. And Mr. Stewart, I appreciate very much what you had to say. I've been living the nightmare of the Airbnbs for, since, actually, since March. Tried to work with the owner, tried to work with the property manager, to no avail. I would have my ten-year-old granddaughter here to speak out as well because she's adversely affected with this because she can't even ride her bike on the street because there's so much traffic. She's in bed at home asleep right now. I live on a cul-de-sac, and right across the street from me is an Airbnb. I'm working on four-hour sleep today because I was up last night with the Temecula PD trying to enforce the noise abatement that we have in the city, and they finally quieted down about 12:15 last night. Worked very closely with the police department, Officer Hanson's been out there a minimum of five times. There's been at least five written incidences for this location, and it's been that way since day one. Same thing happens every week. Two cars pull up, they get settled, all of a sudden, there's ten cars, then the noise begins. The wine country, tour buses come, the limos come, the drinkies come, and then we're up all night having to listen to that. Used to be on the weekends, now it's the weekdays as well. So I would be opposed to any regulation. I think they don't belong in our residences. I mean, unlike these people, I've lived there for twenty-seven years. We have a wonderful neighborhood, a wonderful cul-de-sac. Children don't even go out and play anymore because they don't want to be hit by a car. That's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. I thank you for listening to me, and I hope you'll take this into advisement. Thank you.
Kimberly, followed by Ashley Olson.
Good afternoon. Kimberly Palmer, long-term Temecula resident, long-term member of the business community. Thank you so much for letting me speak in favor of the Short-Term Rental Alliance. While I'm extremely sensitive to, you know, the appeals tonight of the people that are not for this, I think that there are viable solutions that can address pretty much every problem that they have mentioned. And my particular position is, I was, I'm a real estate agent, I'm a real estate professional, you know, twenty years in property management, real estate sales, and it wasn't too long ago that a large percentage of homes in our community were vacant due to foreclosure. And during that time, I was hired by many of the banks to actually go door-to-door to talk to all the homeowners, to assess their situation, to see if there was anything we could do to keep the homeowners in their homes, and to report back to all the various banks. You know, I represented many, many banks and going to many, many homeowners, spent counts, you know, countless hours counseling them on home retention strategies. And I would have loved to have had an option like this to give the people that, whose stories were absolutely gut-wrenching. They wanted to stay in our community. They did not want to have a foreclosure. They did not want to have their home boarded up and held by a, you know, a bank or a mortgage company. They did not want, they did not want to be locked out of buying again in our community after three to five years because of their foreclosure. That was a large, you know, massive reduction in tax revenues for our city. It was just really problematic. And I believe that this is an option that, you know, if that, and again, we are enjoying, we are on the top upswing of a market. We're in a balanced market for the first time. I've been in the industry for twenty years. We're in a balanced market, but we've had growth for approximately, let's say, eight. And so, you know, with my twenty years in the industry, I'm a little concerned. We've been growing and gaining for a good, long while, and I have, you know, four or five years in that market where I was knocking on doors every day, all day, every day, trying to assist homeowners in staying in their home. It was, it was like a ghost town. Many, many streets you would drive by, and now all the homes were vacant. In some outlying communities, we had transients moving into the homes. I had listings that I would try to sell where vagrants, or not even vagrants, people who lost their home and just didn't have anywhere to go would actually move in and squat. We had squatter problems. And a lot of that, we had registration of the homes so that the city could manage those properties, or at least know that they were vacant and had been foreclosed on. I believe that the city council, you know, wants the rights of every homeowner to be represented here. That's what I believe that everybody here wants. I believe there's viable solutions, especially when the main appeal that I'm hearing here tonight is the noise, that the noise is really problematic, and it's really infringing on the rights of the neighbors to people who own short-term rentals. And there is easy fix for that. I think Jessica mentioned the decibel counter. I think it runs three hundred dollars. I really encourage anybody who lives next door to a short-term rental to purchase one themselves so they have their evidence, that they can go, register's like zero to ten. You can set it, when you are a short-term rental owner, you can set it to a decibel that you would allow. When you, like, let's say you had to go to short, small claims court over a noise violation or repeated violations, you would have your file with your evidence. And we do see a huge reduction in noise complaints when we say that we have our, here's our file, this is our electronic proof of what the decibels were at the house during that time. I just want to encourage, I guess, encourage the city council that I believe that this industry will be here whether it is, you know, legal and regulated, or it'll be under the table. And I would much rather see it be regulated and all homeowner rights taken into consideration. And I do believe there's viable solutions for every problem that's been presented to the council tonight against, and I stand for it. Thank you very much for your time.
Speaker is Ashley Olson, to be followed by our final speaker, Tom Olson.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to touch on everyone's noise complaints. So we had a traditional rental next to our house for three years. They had small children, they were alcoholics, drug addicts, and were up every single night, all night, all hours of the night. Christmas Eve, they were outside. Christmas Eve, they were outside chasing each other with a frying pan, hitting each other in the head. Unbelievable. If it was an Airbnb, I'd deal with it for a few nights, and those people would be gone and never be allowed back in. Unfortunately, they were a traditional rental. They were there for three years. There was nothing we could do. The cops would come out. Sorry, you know, they'd ask them to go in, or stop, or stop yelling, or fighting. Unfortunately, we dealt with it for three years. So, I get the noise complaint, but also, when you have a house with a pool and a jacuzzi as owners, you will go outside and use that too, and you're going to have a party at your house. So, this is all the same thing. You deal with noise, you ask them nicely to, you know, talk. I think the, um, the noise things in the wall is huge, and so, that's just my comparison to Airbnb and long-term rentals. I'd much rather an Airbnb next to me than a rental with a crap renter. Thank you.
Here is Tom Olson.
Evening. Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak on, in favor of short-term rentals in, in Temecula. Um, I've been a resident of Temecula for almost 12 years now, and I've raised my kids here. Um, I'm also a veteran and a Realtor in, in the community. What I would say is that choice is important. Um, right now, I just helped a client, uh, that's a Navy corpsman, purchase a house, um, right, right off a nickel's. And if he were to get orders tomorrow, um, he would be looking down the barrel of a $500 delta between what he could rent it out for and what his mortgage is, and/or a short sale on his record. So, having him be able to have the choice of a short-term rental to supplement the income so that he doesn't have to lose that house is huge. Um, or, and we all know that life changes happen throughout. So, when a situation changes, financial situations change, um, this could be a flex for an, an owner to be able to keep their, their property and not lose it, and maybe return to it as a primary residence when their situation improves. Um, I'm very sympathetic to, um, all of the issues that come with short-term rentals. As my wife shared, we've lived next to a long-term rental that's had similar issues as well. So, um, I'm all for regulation and responsible management. And it's not always an owner being on the property that would result in responsible management, because we all know that, that owner being on the property, they may be on that property for 10 minutes and then leave. Um, I, I think that we should, uh, have regulations to, uh, not as punitive regulations, but empower enforcement so that the problem rentals can be squashed quickly. So, empower, maybe empowering the local law enforcement to evict problem tenants without the consent of, of the property owner. Just get them out of there if they're an issue, and then the street, the three-strikes-or-out rule. Hold people accountable, but don't punish those that are accountable for the actions of those that aren't. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, it is time for the Council to weigh in. Mr. Nigar, I see you're up first.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, boy. Listening to all of these comments, um, you know, uh, Mr. Comarchero and I have been up here a very long time, and, uh, you know, once a year, maybe, once every two years, you get an issue that comes up, and, uh, the people are very passionate about it, and I just wanted to compliment everybody. I, I, I loved all the ideas that you brought up, and I thought you were all articulate and, uh, very clear and concise, uh, as to the problem. Um, you know, you try to balance a property right. Somebody owns a home, they want to utilize that property, make money from the property, rent it out. You try to balance that with what every homeowner wants and, and anticipates getting. It's almost in the homeowner bill of rights, and that's peaceful, quiet enjoyment. Um, in my heart of hearts, I cannot imagine any one of our residents spending one more night under those circumstances, period. I, I just can't imagine that occurring and having to deal with it. Or having to go to some next-door house and talk to a stranger who couldn't care less. Uh, it's, it, it, it cannot happen, okay? A, a couple of things. The industry, whatever we do, the industry brought it on itself, okay? They should have self-regulated themselves. None of what's been articulated tonight should be happening. Now, granted, it's not happening everywhere all the time, but it's happening enough to where it needs to be addressed. Um, so, here's, I, I'm going to say a couple of things. I, I wish, uh, we need to come back with a, a package of laws, and all of your ideas were really, really good. Some we can't do, you know, uh, just because of logistics and laws and things like that, but most of them, we can. Um, whatever package, and, and I'm sure we'll send it back to the Subcommittee, and we'll start dealing with getting an ordinance together that, that regulates this, but it needs to be able to be enforced. So, whatever package we put together has to be immediately enforceable. Not to call the officers and the officer say, "Hey, can you quiet down?", uh, and then come, come back, and they don't quiet down. All of the stress and anxiety that is being put on our residents because of this industry needs to stop, period. Okay? So articulate were you, and I, you know, really, it's a, it's a tough, uh, balance. Um, forgot the young lady's name there, the one who moved to Marietta. I'm looking at you right now. You know, you've got a nice little business, you're managing your affairs. I have no doubt that you're probably one of the good ones, okay? You're very articulate. Um, you live local, and you care. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people who are doing this as an investment. It makes them a lot of money. Um, they have no vested interest in the community, other than making that money. I, I just can't imagine being in that situation. So, I, I would even support a moratorium, to be quite honest with you, until this law is crafted. I know that's radical, but I'm, I'm, I'm angry. I'm angry that any one of our residents should be put into that situation for even one night. That's, that's just crazy. Anyway, that's my two cents, and, uh...
Mr. Stewart?
Well, I mean, if we're talking regulation, I definitely think we have to have a TOT tax, and that should be even higher than what the hotels pay, because it's going to require a different level of, uh, enforcement than a hotel, because it, they're spread out. We know if we go to a hotel, we can drive to the hotel district, per se, and we can, we can do our inspections of those much easier and economical. Um, as far as residential zones, I mean, if you were to buy a house in a residential community, you expect it to be a residential community. You should not have to worry about someone buying the house next to you and turning it into a hotel. I mean, to me, that, that's, I, I don't, I honestly, I don't have a problem with, um, short-term rentals, as long as it's being hosted. Um, and, and I'm not even opposed to someone who wants to rent out their house for the weekend, because when that person returns home on Monday, if their neighbor had a single issue with that renter, or, uh, that, that, whoever was in that house that weekend, they're going to hear it from that neighbor, because they've got a relationship with that neighbor. And that's, that's what's missing here. We're missing a relationship. And that's truly what neighborhoods are supposed to be. It's supposed to be full of neighbors. And without neighbors, you can't have relationships. So, um, and I, you know, a good point was brought up by one, uh, young lady about, um, uh, safety of their kids. I mean, you could do all the background check you want on the person who's actually renting that Airbnb, but the other couple, or the other two couples that show up for that Airbnb, one could be a child molester, and we have no control over that. And there's no checks and balances for that at all, and that concerns me. I mean, that, that, when she, when she brought that up, I thought, "That is a big concern to me." So, you know, as far as, um, uh, you know, the noise issue, you know, the one young lady brought up a good point. I, I've been next to bad neighbors, too. And, you know, it could be hell living in your own neighborhood, just because there's a neighbor right next to you, a renter, or it could even be a homeowner, that you just don't get along with, and they're just being, uh, straight-up nasty to you. So, um, that's going to happen. But to me, it's the expectation, you bought a home in a residential community because it's a residence. And it's not a residence for these people. It is a hotel room. And so, that's where I have my rub in this whole situation. Again, I'm totally okay with someone renting out a room, two rooms, even their house on the weekend. I, I don't have a whole lot of rub against that either, but when it comes right down to it, it's, it's a little scary. And I agree with Mike. I mean, if I'm a resident here, I would expect my city government to, to, to protect me from stuff like this. So, that's where I'm coming from. Regulate, regulate.
To, uh, Mr. Mayor, boy, this is a tough one, as, as Mike said. And we've, uh, we've had some tough ones over the years, but the problem here is that we've got two sides of the issues, both saying things that are valid and maybe some invalid at the same time. Uh, when I was first elected way back when, farther than I can remember, the city manager we had here at the time sat me down and said, "You know, your job is to split the baby." Well, this is a split-the-baby moment, or it will be when it comes back. So, so it is tough. On the one hand, we've got a business environment that is creating good income opportunities for, for people, not all of them doing right. Ma'am, you are, thank you. Um, but not everybody is. But we're also dealing with an environment that runs a very strong risk of being a neighborhood destroyer. We can't allow that. Uh, I, I think whatever we do going forward, our number-one priority has to be protection of our citizens and their neighborhoods. No matter how we regulate, that has to be top of the list when it comes to doing what's right for our residents. So, what can we do? Um, there's a couple of things that I, I heard tonight that, that troubled me, besides that I'm troubled by the issue anyway. Uh, and one was the comment about HOAs. And likely, those communities that have HOAs will not permit it, and that's their right as an HOA. Peter, correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. So, but what about the communities who don't have an HOA? By the very nature of what we're doing, we're pushing that short-term vacation rental business into those communities. They're going to go somewhere, it's the old squeezing the balloon. And so, that's creating an unlevel playing field, and that's certainly not fair to those residents without an HOA. So, we have to find some way, if we're going to do anything here, to balance that, those issues. And I think one of the ways to do it, maybe the best way, is to insist on the homeowner being present in the home. And the HOA, non-HOA, doesn't make any difference. There was another comment, the gentleman back there, I think it was you who made it, that said we should charge a high rate of TOT, or, or, uh, registration fee, or whatever it is, so that we can better fund code enforcement officers who have to go out at 2:00 in the morning to squelch the noise. I don't want our code enforcement officers, or our sheriff's officers, going out to neighborhoods at 2:00 in the morning because there's noise. That's not the solution. We have to stop that noise from occurring at 2:00 in the morning. Uh, there's no sense in trying to mask a problem or put a Band-Aid on the problem when we know what the underlying issue is. So, we have to cure that. Uh, it's really tough. Generally speaking, uh, I, I think the responsible thing to do is to come back with regulation, but it's got to be really tight. Uh, and, and as I said before, if it doesn't favor our current residents and the peaceful existence in their home, then we failed. I think we have to do that. Uh, fortunately or unfortunately, I won't be here when it comes back, and the rest of you can take what I'm saying and throw it away, but, um, I hope you won't. That's about it.
Thank you for your, your comments. I, I agree with them wholly. And Mr. Stewart brought up a good point, um, regarding, uh, the TOT tax. Um, you have an unequal playing field. You have hotels who charge the TOT tax, and, uh, part of it gets passed on to us. Believe it or not, um, most residents won't know that the local hotels, um, in, in Temecula have gotten together and formed their own little association, and they actually charge an additional fee to their room renters to, to promote their industry, um, instead of coming to the city for money or what have you. So, I, I just thought that was interesting, uh, to mention. But, um, uh, if we wanted to do a tax, I think the, the citizens would have to vote that in. And so, um, and, and I'm not opposed to putting up a TOT tax for, for those rentals, um, and let the citizens vote on that, but just so you know, we don't, we don't have that ability to impose that. I, I just want to reiterate something that I said. What, um, obviously, we're going to craft a package, and we'll bring that back, and we'll talk about the strictness there. But whatever we do bring back, the overlying, or the overarching, um, premise needs to be that if, if sheriffs are called, it can be enforced immediately. That's, so that there's no recalls, there's no having to go back out, there's no, it's, and I agree with Mr. Comarchero, I would hope it would never happen. So, maybe we can structure a set of laws and permitting processes and things of that nature, so that that would never happen. But if it does, having somebody live with that, um, they should be able to call our sheriff's department, and, um, perhaps the sheriff shows up, "Show me your permit. Um, how many people do you have in the house?", whatever, go through the list, what have you. And if they're in violation, you're shut down. Everybody out, okay? Whatever. Uh, whoever's on the B&amp;B contract, you guys can stay. Everybody out. And that should take care of it. Needs to be immediately enforceable. That's, that's my point.
All right. Well, Mr. Adams?
Just, just one point of clarification, because it was mentioned a couple times about, um, and I'd like, Peter, you, you to confirm or correct me here, but, um, the concept of adopting an escalated TOT, um, as was suggested by some, I think would call for a vote of the people. Is that correct? But if the city wanted to consider collection of the current TOT, which is 8% set for our hotel, would we be allowed, without a vote of people, to collect that 8%? As, as part of a short-term vacation rental proposal? So, there would, that would not require a vote of the people?
All right. Thanks for the clarification, Mr. Adams. So, uh, you know, so I, I agree with a lot of what was said up here. I think the, um, you know, I, I spoke earlier this evening about certain type of business here that's operating 100% illegally. Um, and, uh, you know, Mr. Nigar here mentioned, "Well, we need a moratorium." Well, we have a moratorium. It's illegal to operate a short-term vacation rental currently in the city of Temecula. Uh, all of the businesses who are doing so are currently breaking the law of the city of Temecula. Uh, and I find that to be incredibly frustrating, because even as we continued our outreach to the community to let folks know, "There's, these are the rules, this is what's happening right now in the city, we want your input", the number of short-term vacation rentals increased during those months. Uh, you know, it's like, "Come on, work with us just a little bit here", right? Um, I find that frustrating, because it, it tells me, you know, a lot about, um, you know, some, some of the ethic and, and some of the challenge here in trying to manage and mitigate, uh, the issues in the neighborhoods here. Um, you know, the, uh, uh, challenge that we have, I think, in front of us is finding a balance, right? Uh, people speculate on property, and they expect a, a certain type of value, a certain type of return potentially on that. Uh, but oftentimes, you see that on raw land, if you're going to develop, or you see it on commercial development, and, you know, the types of businesses and things you're going to run. Um, and usually, you know, home speculation is, is more or less just, "Property value's going to go up", right? Not, you know, "I'm going to make a lot of, you know, money off of this property by renting it out as a hotel." Um, you know, and as I'm listening to folks talk about this, you know, one thing sort of struck me that hadn't really occurred to me in the past, and that's, you, you know, could you imagine a hotel being permitted in the city of Temecula, where we allow a management company to offer rooms, provide the services to those folks, have a, have a, a hot tub and a pool, potentially an open bar, and then provide no security, no oversight... an open bar, and then provide no security, no oversight, no onsite presence whatsoever, and just say, "Okay, have a good night," right? And you do all of this online without ever actually seeing a person, you just walk in, use the facilities. Could you imagine how that hotel would be run? You know, I mean, you know, we would never allow something like that to happen, so why is it okay that we would allow sort of a similar operation in, in the city? You know, it just kinda puts it, puts it, puts it into a little bit of perspective for You know, one of the things that was mentioned too is talking about the folks who have hosted rental properties, right? And that provides the accountability, I think, the direct, the immediate accountability that a lot of folks are looking for. You know, when I moved here years ago, I had a neighbor that had a barking dog, and that neighbor would leave for work very early in the morning, about 4:00 in the morning, and that's when the dog would start to bark, 'cause the dog would get shoved outside, and it would go on continuously. And I went through the same process that a lot of you were talking about back then. I wasn't on the city council at the time, so I couldn't just call up the city manager, although I tried. But, you know, I, I actually got through and, and, you know, provided all the information I could. Code enforcement was as gracious as they could be with the, with the process, and I even calculated BPM for code enforcement, which was barks per minute, just so that they understood the magnitude, because code enforcement unfortunately wasn't able to make it out there at 4:00 in the morning when it was raining. So, you know, we've all had those neighbors, we've all had that, but if I knew that, that neighbor had zero accountability, that I wasn't able to, you know, speak to that person or that I had to go through code enforcement or law enforcement, and, you know, and frankly, why would they care? They're gonna be gone tomorrow, right? And frankly, I don't think it's a great use of law enforcement. We have crime. We have issues in the city, and we need our officers on patrol, not being a nanny state for people who can't behave themselves in our neighborhoods. You know, that is a poor use of, of those extremely valuable resources. I appreciate you guys doing it, but come on, there's a lot better things you guys could be doing with your time. You know, the, mentioned about the onsite presence, I love the idea because it provides, again, that direct accountability. If it's too loud, I, I, I know the censors you're talking about, I know that it provides an opportunity to call over, but again, you know, there's no immediate, there's no onsite presence. One of the things that was talked about were the HOAs, and it occurs to me here with regard to HOAs. HOAs can be more restrictive than the city can, but they can't be less restrictive. So whatever we create here sort of sets the minimum bar, right? And if a homeowners association chooses to set that bar, you know, higher, that's their prerogative. That's their opportunity to set what they believe is the appropriate character and use in that neighborhood. And so, you know, we absolutely need some minimum standard, and especially for those communities and those that came up that said, you know, they aren't represented by an HOA. I think that's a, a, a good opportunity. And I know that, you know, Wolf Creek, for instance, you guys passed a, a requirement that you can't rent a house for more than, Brad, fill me in here, it's-
Well, actually, you can't rent a house less than 30 days. There's no short-term rentals permitted. However, we have had problems with it, and the unfortunate side effect is, is that law enforcement would be there to enforce it, but it's low priority call. They may not get there for several hours, and our residents are really complaining.
Yeah. And, and, and like I say, it's, I mean, the, the challenge is, is they're, you know, they're operating even, you know, in, under an existing rule in, in the HOA that says this absolutely isn't allowed, and yet still people are doing it. So, you know, point being, we're always gonna have bad actors. We're gonna have wonderful ones out there as well, the folks who run a good business and, and do things the right way, and the visitors to our city who wanna be here and, and act appropriately. But unfortunately, what we've been hearing, you know, over the last year especially, is that that isn't, you know, necessarily always the case. I took a lot of notes, I'm gonna just skip over most of this, 'cause a lot of it was said. Oh, and, you know, one of the other things that was mentioned, and this was said by several of the speakers, was the issue is just the noise. The issue isn't just the noise. You know, I think that's clear, right? The issue is the character of the neighborhood, the knowing your neighbors, the having a neighborhood. It's a lot, the reason why a lot of us moved to Temecula in the first place. You know, it was an extremely welcoming community when I came here, and, and, you know, loved the neighborhoods that I've, I've lived in here, and, and, you know, I think it's important that we foster that kind of, you know, interaction when, in, in our communities, and the, the knowledge that, you know, when we have issues and when things go, go wrong, or, or even right in our communities, we can talk to our neighbor because we know them. So it's not just about noise, and it's not just about parking. And it's also not just about the tax. You know, the, one of the gentlemen representing, I can't remember what organization it was, HomeAway, you know, mentioned that, you know, Palm Springs has a $2 million program. You know, who's gonna pay for that? Is HomeAway gonna foot the bills so they can buy properties and rent them out as hotels? Because that's, that's not, you know, that's not an inconsequential program for a city, particularly given the escalation we've seen in the number of residences here that are being used by short-term rentals. You know, and, and frankly, again, I think, you know, we have a lot of opportunity for our officers and code enforcement to do their job, and this is just adding another layer and complication to that, and ultimately, cost to the city, because administering a robust program like that, that has, you know, 24-hour on-call and response and, you know, everything else, it's cost the city a lot of money. And for, for what? For some, you know, modest transient occupancy tax that's tagged onto the bill? You know, I'm just not sure there's a cost-benefit analysis that would justify it. So I see this, you know, potentially, if, if we were to allow all types of vacation rentals, this would be a net loser for the city. So I have a list of recommendations here that, you know, I think I've heard, and just, just kinda run down the list, and as we go through this with staff and start to create some model ordinance on this, you know, I, I agree, I think there needs to be the, something akin to a three-strikes. I think there also needs to be severe penalties along with that. You know, I think the, and, and, and things that actually work, right? When I was working in San Diego, worked with San Diego State University, owned a home not too far from campus, and not surprisingly, the thing that those homes rapidly became as I lived there years ago were student housing, right? And you'd have a, and, and let me tell you, our houses down there were less than, I think mine was 1,250 square feet, right? Three-bedroom home, nice, small, little bungalow-type house, loved it dearly, and they were converting those into student housing, where in some cases, 12 students would live there. You know, and so the city had to, you know, create something very similar to what we did and, and provide that ban, but only worked once they provided severe penalties for violation, right? The ban itself didn't get any traction for months and months. And so we need to take that into consideration. I liked the idea of a hotline. I liked the idea of limiting the total number of nights if we were to allow some type of use, limiting the total number of nights that could be rented out in a given year, or even potentially in a month. I also really liked the idea of owner-occupied. Again, it all goes down to the accountability of having somebody on-site to be able to be responsive. Obviously, business licenses, you know, everybody who's done this has opened up a business in our city, and yet they failed to, you know, for the most part, get a business license. You know, "What did you think you were doing? You're opening up a business." Kinda sad. I also think we need to create a good neighbor policy that's, you know, handed out to anybody who, if we do decide to have some level of this, a good neighbor policy needs to be there, not just for the neighbors. That's sort of your bill of rights, you know? I think everybody needs to be notified when one of these comes on board, and everybody, you know, within a certain radius of that home should be made aware. We should have a pamphlet or some sort of information or something on our website or both, that says, "These are your rights as a resident," and then, "These are the expectations for that owner of what, you know, the rules are in the city." And then, you know, I can go on and on, fees and TOT, you know, we may wanna consider a higher TOT at some point, but certainly, you know, adopting the easier version of what we already have existing is a good step forward if we're going to adopt a policy. And then if we feel like the administration of this, you know, exceeds, you know, the, the TOT that's being collected in business fees, then I think we need to consider, you know, increasing that. And then, you know, the other thing I think we need to build into this is that we revisit it, right? That, you know, after this program, if whatever, you know, ultimately gets adopted is in place, I think that after six or 12 or 18 months, we need to revisit this and, and talk to local law enforcement about issues with regard to crime, talk to, you know, the residents, talk to code enforcement, and find out how many violations we've had, and find out if what we're doing is actually working and preserving the character in our neighborhoods. So those are the big ones for me, as far as I'm none, and I think I, I'll just end there.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with it, with you. I think those are great points, and I could support them. I would add a policy of occupancy within the home. You know, the, the standard kind of policy, I don't know if it's ever enforced, is two occupants per bedroom plus one in a home. So if you have a four-bedroom home, you could have nine people living there. You have a three-bedroom home, you can have seven people living there. I think we should make that part of the policy, but then also, while I don't think we should shut down the option of having an event, there also should be an occupancy limit. If you're using your home as a short-term rental and you're living there, 'cause we're gonna say you have to, I think, then how many people can actually be at your home? 20? I, I don't know what the number is, but something that prevents a party of 100 people showing up, and who knows what they're doing. So, I know that's kinda loosey-goosey, I, I don't know exactly how you do that, but I think it's something that we should consider.
Yeah. Jeff, you're on the right, right track, because from the feedback we've been getting, in particular, we're next to a wine country, a lot of people are having their rehearsal dinners and things of that nature, and, and so they are in, they're, they're renting the place, and they are inviting 25 people or 30 people. Parking's a big deal. Safety is a big deal. Nobody expects that in their, in their neighborhood. And your list is great. Young lady right there in the white turtleneck with the glasses had a great list. Some of the things I didn't agree with, but I'll tell you, about 75% of what you brought up were pretty excellent. So maybe you can leave that list or email it to us, 'cause I thought she was very good. Couple of other thoughts. In the ordinance, we need, again, a mechanism to act quickly, so maybe admin sites, citations immediately, and I'm not talking about small $25 citations, I'm talking about things that bite and hurt. And also the ability to lean the property quickly. In other words, if you're gonna, I, I, I don't know what the enforcement mechanism would be. Is it just a, an officer going out and saying, "Stop it," or, "We, we, we have this comprehensive package." Airbnb is just a facilitator, okay? So you sign up for Airbnb, they, they hook you up with somebody who wants to rent a place, and somebody has a place to rent, and they take a piece of it. So, so if we implement a process, who comes in here to sign up for that process and get all the data of everything that they have to comply with? How does that work? And, now, it's easy if, if one of you have a home and just wanna do it yourself, you walk in here to City Hall, fill out all the paperwork, whatever we're gonna require, and it's done. Somebody's absentee, lives another state, lives in another county or what have you, are, you know, are they gonna come down here and fill out the paperwork? Let's say new ones come on, online. How will they even know that there's an ordinance out there? Yeah, please.
Well, just, if part of what we do mandates that the homeowner must be on the premises, living on the premises, then clearly it's the homeowner that's coming.
Then that answers, that answers a, a lot of questions, yeah. That's good. That's it.
All right. Anything else? All right.
No. Good discussion.
Great.
Very good.
I think, I think we've had a pretty good conversation here this evening. I mean, really, the direction here is just, you know, to provide some sort of, this is the first time as a full council we've had the opportunity to discuss this, and we're providing direction back to staff. I think you've all heard what our intention is here. And then myself and Mr. Stewart on the subcommittee will continue to work with the staff to try and identify a best path forward and sort of consolidate all the thoughts and ideas that we've, we've had here this evening.
Just real quick, thanks to you and Stu, the subcommittee, you've done some excellent work, and also, Mr. Adams, thank you for being responsive to our requests.
Appreciate it. All right. So, let's see, this is receive and file, and then you've gotten direction. Do you need a motion from us, Mr. Adams? No? Do you have everything you need?
No, I think we have the direction we need for this item tonight.
All right.
One quick question, Mr. Mayor. What type of timeframe is reasonable for us to look at in this coming back? And what do our citizens who are experiencing this now do in the meantime? I mean, I just wanna address it. I mean, I, is this gonna take six months to bring back this package? Is it gonna take, is it gonna, would we have it by what, March?
Oh, I think faster than that.
February?
November 27th.
All right. January? I mean, what's, what's reasonable?
February, March would be pretty reasonable, I would say.
I would say too. And so, in the interim, what would we say to our citizens, or maybe we have nothing to say? I, I don't know. What do we say to our citizens who are experiencing this right now? What's, what's their recourse?
Well, well, Peter, I'm gonna look at you for just a moment here. I mean, what, what is the recourse? I mean, you've got an, you know, illegally operating business in town. I mean, I know what our recourse is with cannabis operations and, and the challenges therein, but here-
At this point in time, we'll go through all of the resources that we have to deal with it as it exists right now. But in addition to the sheriff writing administrative citations, we gave them that authority last year, so they, they can write an administrative citation if they find a violation of the municipal code, which would be the noise ordinance would be a primary one. Second, we'll look at repeated violations of the noise ordinance, repeated public nuisances within the community. We do have the authority to file civil suits in that, in that regard. The other thing too is each one of the homeowners has the right to file a small claims court case in the event that they, their peace and quiet has been disturbed, or there's been some type of private nuisance. You know, that, that is more and more common, just because not every nuisance is a public nuisance, and so, small claims court is, is a viable option for a lot of them. But I think what, what Aaron and I will look at is what we can do tomorrow and the next day, as well as what we bring back to you in February and March.
And, and is there an opportunity for an emergency ordinance of, of sorts that sort of sits there temporarily, that levies, you know, more significant, you know, fine for violations?
Well, I think we can look at what the types of violations are that are currently in the code, the noise ordinance, and then you have the option of increasing those fines up to $1,000. Your cap is $1,000.
Okay. 'Cause, 'cause that, that would be, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to see us, you know, move in that direction, honestly, because, you know, the, going back to my experience down near San Diego State, I mean, the, I think the violation at that time was $500 for a noise ordinance violation. And so what they used to do is just collect a fee at the door for everybody that was showing up, and they'd have the $500 there, you know? And so it didn't really resolve anything until the city passed an ordinance that said it was $1,000 per registered resident. Whether or not they were there, it didn't matter. And so when the parents started getting a $1,000 bill in the mail for their kid, then it almost immediately, you know, stopped the, stopped the issue. So, you know, if we can make sure that that's part of, you know, either code enforcement or that administrative citation, and that they, you know, seek, you know, harsher, I think, penalties at this point, you know?
I think it goes up with each-
Get your mic on.
I remember, right? I think the noise ordinance goes up with each infraction or with each call at, at the same residence. Of course, that's gonna be a challenge now, because you're gonna have different people at the residence.
Right. Well, and, and frankly, the businesses that are operating now that, you know, are doing it well, we probably will never hear, and we haven't heard.
Right.
So, you know, those aren't the ones we're really concerned with right now. It's the ones that are operating, not just, you know, illicitly, but, you know, with significant violations.
And noise ordinance is complaint-driven, so.
One last comment to this, again, thinking what you said, if you, if you have a homeowner on-site, then a lot of that could be controlled, but if you're a, if you're an absentee landlord, we have to find a way to communicate with those people-
Yes.
-who are absentees, who may never know we have an ordinance. And, and anyway, so, I mean, we need to, just, go ahead.
Well, the other thing goes along with that is what about, it, let's assume we go with a resident owner on-site. What's the phase-in period for that? I mean, gotta give people a chance to either move into the homes that they have invested into used, and if they have multiple homes, obviously they can't do that, or some kind of lead time for them to sell their homes, if that's what they choose to do, so. Or they can rent them out, you know, on a longer-term basis, have that option too. But that, those are things we have to consider. I, you know, I don't think we can just cut the cord tomorrow and say, you know, "We know you're paying a mortgage on that house, but you can no longer have any income from it." I don't think we can do that.
Yeah. And, you know, it bears talking about, one of the gentlemen spoke about his real estate disclosure. What a nightmare. I think you would have to disclose that.
You did.
You'd have to disclose that, and who would wanna buy a house-
Exactly.
-next to one of these? I mean, it really affects the value. You know, on the same token, this young lady over here, I don't know how you're gonna to move into your two houses in Temecula. It creates a problem for her that you just mentioned.
Well, and one of the things we could consider, too, would be a little bit of a variance, maybe under some conditions, and I don't know what those conditions are, that you don't necessarily have to live in the house, but you have to be a local resident. That's another little variation of that. I don't know if that works enough, but it's something that the banter about.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
You know, and along that same discussion, people who bought these houses as investments bought residential houses in residential neighborhoods. So, what they plan to do with them after the short-term rental policy goes in place is irrelevant to me, because they literally bought that house with the, in a zoned residential community.
And they're operating illegally.
And they're operating illegally. And you know what? They can instantly flip that into a long-term rental overnight. There's people looking for houses right now. So, I don't feel bad for them at all. I don't feel like we should sugarcoat it or soft-sell it. It's like, it's this, and this is it. Sorry. Turn it into a full-time rental.
Oh, my God. We're going to continue this.
No, no, no. My colleague, are you suggesting to eliminate them? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, no.
If they can't.
For people who bought them as investment properties, who don't live there, and they can still be investment prop... I have rental properties. They're all long-term. Flip it into alarm, long-term. I guarantee you, they put it on a listing for one week, they will have a long-term rental.
There's a shortage.
There's a huge shortage in Temecula, so...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fair enough. All right. You're cut off, Mike. That was it. All right. Well, we'll look forward to having this conversation at more length. Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, we're going on to Commissioner Reports. Good evening.
Yes, thank you. I just, I just wanted to comment that our state is going through a fire disaster of unseen previous proportions. I wanted to acknowledge and thank the firefighters, law enforcement, and first responders, and also recognize and thank the family members who are missing those first responders right now, and probably will be missing them during the holiday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
You're here.
Hey, good evening. Planning Commission?
Any report on the Planning Commission?
Nothing. All right. Mr. Schlink?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Nothing from Community Services tonight.
Sure, now that you've been elected.
Now, you're going to climb up. Jeez, all right. Public Safety, good evening. You're not Matt Hayes, but we'll let you speak anyway. All right, City Manager?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and City Attorney?
Close session tonight, but we have no reportable actions under the Brown Act.
All right, thank you. I will take a motion for adjournment then.
So, move. Second, whatever.
Second. All those favor? All right. See you next time.